Called me to order, we'll start with the pledge allegiance, stand if you are.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next we have a roll call, starting on my right.
Counselperson Josh Grant.
Counselperson Brad Fire.
Mayor Jimmy John King.
Counselperson Craig Anderson.
Counselperson Jeremiah Alder.
Looking for approval of tonight's agenda.
Nothing additional, but we want to switch a couple of things around just to help folks get in and out.
So moved to approve. Now if you do switch, approve. Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next we'll look for approval of council meeting minutes of the regular meeting of July eleventh, twenty twenty-three.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
We have a motion to approve, we have a second?
Second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries financing budget, accounts payables in your packet and additional accounts payables here at your desk. Any questions on any of that? Direct them to finance director Carlo, please.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the accounts payable, do we have a second?
Second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that'll take this review of the motions to general business, and what we're going to do is we're going to remove item B and C up. So B will be A, C will be B, A will be C. Land purchase agreement will be the first one, River Equipment. EDA Board has received an offer of city control of one-one-one acres at Schuman Business Park, associated with lot two, block two, parcel ID River Equipment, a Minnesota limited liability company engaging in rental and sales of small and medium equipment, is offering two dollars a square foot for the property, total purchase price of ninety-two thousand two hundred and forty-two. The project will improve construction of facility to house the business operations within the forty-eight months of the agreement of execution. The purchase agreement proposes a closing date with sixty days of execution. The EDA, the EDA's Finance Committee have had the opportunity to review and evaluate the proposal and are recommending approval of the offer of the purchase agreement. City attorney has also reviewed document and included her thoughts and suggestions within the document. The proposed purchase agreement is attached to this RGA for this council's assessment. So what we're going to be looking for, for the council is to approve or deny the purchase offer, purchase agreement with River Equipment for parcel ID five-four-two-seven-two-one-zero-seven-two-six-nine-five. Questions or discussion?
It's the lot to the west of the Quick Trips car lot.
And Justin from River Equipment is here tonight to...
Justin is here if you have any questions. The owner of River Equipment or part owner.
I have a motion to approve it, I think it's fine.
You have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Aye.
We've got a second, questions or discussion? Hearing done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. There you go, Justin. You're welcome to stay here, go where you want to. All right. And Joya, you're welcome to go any time you need to go, I know you've got other things to discuss.
She is Joya.
Sturtville Skate Park. Uh, tonight we'll be looking at the approval of features and contractor. Sturtville Skate Park is moving forward with the project and is ready to purchase the features that were depicted in the renderings. There was a challenge in finding local skate park companies to help build this park. Goals were obtained from the following companies and contractors to purchase, build, and install skate park features. This will also include repairing existing equipment to reuse. Third Layer Ramp Company, thirty-nine thousand six hundred and thirteen dollars eighty-five cents. RampTech.com, OC ramps and paint, eighteen thousand five forty-one plus standard construction, twenty-one thousand five hundred, which came to a total of forty thousand and forty-one dollars. Playground Center, they declined the bid due to location. Funds that were required through the Lowe's Hometown Rent will be used for these expenses, staff is recommended to Lowe's bidder. Do we have any questions or discussion on any of this, from either staff or for others here from Skate Park? If not, council action requested it to be approved, the bid from Third Layer Ramp Company is presented.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, we have a second?
Second.
We have seconds, any questions or discussion for anyone? Hearing done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that will also carry. Thank you and good luck. All right, now we'll go back to ordinance request. Excuse me. Chicken ordinance consideration. Heidi Owen, Katie, Lani, and Jola Van Protsie. Glad to meet you, will be attending the meeting to recap their last visit, requesting the city move forward with creating chicken ordinance. So if one of you ladies would like to get up and speak, is that what you're thinking or? If you can step up to the podium, please, and give us your name, address, please.
I'm sorry, where is he?
Right podium, please, if you'd like. Yep, thank you.
You can all relocate too if you have certain comments.
Hello, city council, I knew I would be nervous speaking in front of everyone, so I prepared my words ahead of time and I'm just going to read what I've heard. Um, I want to thank you all for listening to our comments, I feel privileged to live in a country and a city that allows citizens to have a place to express their concerns. I apologize if my comments have already been mentioned by Heidi at a previous city council meeting, she intended. However, maybe it's beneficial to hear that Stuartville citizens independently come to similar conclusions. I have two points that I would like to put forward to the city council. My first point is this, a more self-sufficient community is a stronger community. Self-sufficiency allows us to be better equipped to provide for our own needs and help others in need should economic difficulties arise. A couple of years ago, I spoke with my grandparents about the Great Depression and their experiences with it. In school, I learned that many people ate dog food to survive, became homeless, lived in shanty towns, and many even died. And I wondered how my grandparents survived and what their lives were like. Their response to me was that the only people who were able to reasonably provide for their needs were those who could independently provide for their own needs, like my grandpa's family who had a farm in Nebraska with a dairy cow, chickens, farm crops, and a large garden, or possessing a skill that was needed at the time and being able to barter work for groceries and clothing and things of that nature, like my grandma's family. This may seem like a bit of an extreme example, as we often live with the perception that something like the Great Depression is not able to happen again. Whether that's true or not, it is true from my own experience that sometimes families, including my own, go through hard economic stretches where you may not have income for a couple of months, or in the case of my parents, a couple of years. It is not doomsday prepping to prepare for such circumstances, it is simply wisdom. My second point I would like to make is this, we cannot forbid every community action that poses a potential inconvenience. The question that should be asked in permitting an action is this, is the desired action wrong? And if it's not wrong, is the desired action a reasonable inconvenience? For better clarity, I would like to provide a few examples. I would like the teenagers on our street to not play loud music as they drive past our house in the early evening occasionally when I'm trying to put my one girl to bed. I would like it if our neighbor's dad would not occasionally poop in our yard. My sister-in-law and brother-in-law would like it if their neighbor didn't ride motorcycles and wake up their children when he goes to work in the morning. We cannot ban teenagers from playing loud music while they drive at eight in the evening. We cannot ban dogs, we cannot ban motorcycles. Why? Because in every case, it is a reasonable inconvenience. Now, in every case, I don't think it's wrong that we would talk to, uh, excuse me. Now, in these cases and similar cases, I don't think it would be wrong to talk to our neighbors about how their actions are affecting us and ask them to change. However, legally, our country and our city grants these freedoms to its citizens because they are not wrong and they are a reasonable inconvenience. Given certain parameters like poop cleanliness, chickens not getting out into neighbors' yards, no roosters, et cetera, I argue that chicken ownership falls under the umbrella of a reasonable inconvenience. And as a side note, I would like to add that my husband has volunteered to be someone to help monitor that people would follow ordinance so that it's not an unreasonable inconvenience to neighbors and to the community, should that opportunity come about. In conclusion, I perceive that chicken, uh, Stuartville chicken ownership could be a beneficial change for our community, making us stronger and better equipped for self-sufficiency and generosity in challenging economic times. And additionally, an ordinance allowing for chicken ownership would be in keeping with the American tradition of freedom, given that the action is not wrong and not an unreasonable inconvenience.
Um, I just printed off a few tip sheets, I know last time there was some questions about certain things and I thought this might be helpful, they're pretty basic, but that's just a, an example of a permit that a small community has, and then this is just a couple pages on like, what? Maybe stuff you already know, but I just thought it'd be helpful.
Very good, thank you, that's good. I, uh, want to see kind of what other cities have.
So thanks for letting us come back here, and I'm Heidi Owen, um, just to kind of summarize, thank you for that. I don't feel like I need to say anything else, but, um, from last week, we talked about, um, the benefits of the backyard chicken for community members that want to have them. Sustainable food production, raising chickens in backyard coops can provide a sustainable source of fresh eggs for the household. Education and awareness, chicken coops offer an opportunity for community veterans, especially children, to learn about where food comes from, how animals are cared for, promotes a deeper understanding of a sustainable agriculture, and opens up, opens up the opportunity for kids to participate in 4H and FFA with projects. Waste production, chickens can be excellent waste recyclers, they eat food scraps, leftovers, reducing the amount of organic waste that would otherwise end up in landfills. Fostering community connections, caring for chickens can be a communal activity and brings neighbors together. It encourages cooperation, fosters sense of community, as people share knowledge, experiences, and even surplus eggs. The economy for Stuartville, some communities have embraced the urban farm movement, and backyard chicken coops can be part of that. Local chicken, chicken keeping enthusiasts might offer workshops, sell surplus eggs, or provide supplies, thus contributing to the local economy, visiting the local hardware store and build a coop, and purchasing feed at the elevator here in Stuartville. Health benefits, keeping chickens can be a, help positive mental and, be positive for your mental and physical health. Getting kids and adults outside, tending to the chickens in sun, rain, or snow allows for great learning and some exercise. And lastly, a small group of community members are asking for the opportunity to own and care for chickens in a way that is not disruptive or nuisance to their neighbors and community. This is a reasonable request that so far has no compelling reason to be denied. Community members that are supporting this, um, ordinance are currently collecting signatures for a petition, I think we have roughly two hundred plus signatures right now? Two hundred and eighteen, two hundred and eighteen. Um, so we really want to make this happen and support the city council in whatever way we can to promote thoughtful and responsible guidelines and regulations to make this a positive addition to our community, and ask that you move forward with an ordinance allowing backyard chickens. Thank you for your time.
My name is Madison Harold, and I live at six-one-six, Athabod, New York East, and I'm reading this statement on behalf of my brother, who lives at the same address. My name is Isaac Harold, and I'm a twenty-one years Stuaveville resident, twenty-twenty S.A. Just graduate, and a current senior at the UW River Falls, where I will graduate in December with my bachelor's of science in animal science, emphasizing meat animal management and poultry science, along with a minor in farm management. I am unable to attend tonight's meeting due to an internship within the laying hen and egg industry in Iowa, but I've asked my sister to present on my behalf. I first stood behind this podium in twenty-fourteen to ask the council for the very same thing that I, like many others here, are asking for tonight, an ordinance allowing Stuartville citizens to raise backyard chickens. A lot has changed for me since then. I was a little city kid eager to raise my own food, not something I could grow in a garden, but something that would teach me more responsibility. Not a household pet, but something that was a small production animal, that was quiet, easy, to maintain, and hardy. When you look at the animals that meet this criteria, you guessed it, chickens. At that time, I never would have guessed that my education and future career goals would involve chickens, but after ten years of keeping, patching, and raising a variety of poultry from quail to eboos in my urban basement and backyard, I found my true passion. I would like to emphasize the importance and benefits of allowing residents to own backyard chickens, along with the misconceptions and uneducated arguments opposed. Backyard chickens offer not only a source of local homegrown food, but a sense of self-sufficiency, responsibility, and education. Education to me is the most important aspect of backyard flocks, as without the opportunities through the Stuartville FFA and my personal backyard flock, I would never have decided to go into an agri-lay career. Now, as a student and a young adult entering a career like this, I fear for our future as a country and for the world, as people have no idea where their food comes from. More and more farms are going belly up, and the backbone of America is dying. As much as we agree or disagree, we need farmers, period. Not offering educational opportunities for today's youth to experience agriculture in any aspect eliminates the potential of having one more advocate for ag in the rapidly changing world. Educated, well-spoken advocates for production agriculture are essential, especially when we are looking at a global population of nearly ten billion by twenty-fifteen. I work in the large-scale egg production industry, I study it, I understand the ins and outs, the good, bad, and ugly of chicken ownership, from the commercial multimillion head complexes all the way down to the small backyard flock. I see chickens as a production animal, something that provides me food. However, these birds are seen by many as pets, with the benefit of producing breakfast. For those that are familiar with livestock showing and judging, you know what I mean. The human-animal bond is strong, whether it be a show animal or a pet, and chickens are no exception. Starting a flock is expensive, it takes work, research, money, and daily commitment. This alone will deter citizens because you will never get your money back from these birds. Minnesota winters will weed out those who aren't cut out for the job, especially in times when hens are in minimal production. To tackle some of the biggest concerns I've heard in the past and logical solutions quickly. Roosters, hens do not require roosters to lay eggs, roosters should not be allowed within city limits. Flock limits, flocks of under six birds produce adequate eggs, and minimal to no noise, much less than a dog. Predators and rodents, feed storage and management indoors in a metal-sealed container eliminates all issues with rodents. If they don't have access to the feed and birds, they give up. Minnesota winters, outside birds such as turkeys and songbirds handle brutal winters well, if properly cared for, chickens are no different. Manure, chickens do not stink, proper manure management with under six hens is very simple. Composting to use in future gardens or simply bagging manure and disposing of it in the city gardens is acceptable. Proper housing, hen housing should consist of a predator-proof coop that allows access to the inside, outside of the elements, along with confined outside access. Housing-specific requirements should be included in the ordinance. Please take this into consideration tonight, think about those that oppose it and their reasoning, along with the silent majority. The youth and other individuals you could potentially shoot down today over something small like a chicken could have changed the future of not only the poultry industry, but animal and production agriculture. Thank you, I have Isaac's contact information if you have any questions for him.
Anyone else want to speak? Jeremiah, you got any data?
Oh, I mean, where did you come up with the?
That would be the River Falls, some, an example of what their ordinance is. So, and some are a lot more like, if you look at Byrons, it's a lot. And my thought was a lot to also enforce and like, you know. But I guess it just depends on what the city wants, if they want to like, get in depth and have specific measurements and poop measurements and that kind of thing, or if it would be more like, basic.
Greg? Yeah, I'm gonna offer probably a bunch here, and it's because I think you guys deserve to hear. For whatever reason, I made my decision one way, and I don't know if I'm making a decision tonight, but I have very mixed feelings on this, I have not a strong feeling one way or the other, other than what I hear from people that elect us to sit up here. I hear you guys pro-chicken, I hear plenty of people that are anti-chicken. Realistically, the arguments for the pro-chicken, at least you guys are putting substance into it, and there's, there's actual positivity. The other negatives are like, like you had said, people are inconvenienced. But, that's why we do live in a city and we have ordinances to cover that stuff. The three things I hate the most to make decisions on up here are sidewalks, speed, and chickens. And I generally think, because the arguments are usually very self-centered nature, because it's about a very, something that you have a strong feeling for, I don't want a sidewalk here because people are going to be looking in my bedroom, and that never, it, it ends up benefiting the community way more than the few people that I, we piss off if we do say yes on a sidewalk. I hate the fact that you guys presented so well, because I keep thinking of the movie Footloose, and Rem gave a great speech to Dance in Town, and I'm on, like, I feel like the negative side of things here, so I hate that too. Uh, and I don't like the optics of the fact that we had no ordinance, no chicken ordinance, and there's clearly several violators, and now we, we should just change it and appease that, and then suddenly everybody will follow all the rules when they wouldn't before. That, that's just something that's in my head. However, I think you guys got me swayed enough to at least move forward and look into it more. I, I really liked, I like what you gave us tonight. I like the fact that if you've got people that are willing to help us out, like, we would have to have some sort of permitting process, I think, to know where they're at, and I would want, I want us, if we, if I were to ever be on the side of a yes vote, I would want to make sure that there are enough teeth and everything, and that it was going to be well-maintained enough that I can feel good about just the naysayers, because some people are going to bitch just no matter what. And that doesn't bother me, uh, but they can make it miserable. I'm curious about some of the things that I'll want to research more. How much neighbor approval, I, I like in this one where I read it, that it said, you know, complaints could be enough to, to, to look at it and possibly revoke, revoke it. I don't know how it would work as far, or how it works, and maybe you can enlighten me as far as getting a neighborhood approval, do, is that usually required, just getting approval from like, two or three people that might back up to your backyard, I would think, I mean, it shouldn't have to be overburdened. So, basically, just rambling, saying nothing, because I don't think they're voting on anything tonight, nor do I want to, I'm not prepared to personally. Uh, I think I explained why, the reasons I'm against it and reasons for it, but I, I don't know that the reasons against it are, are huge. So I, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm willing to move forward and look into it a little bit more, get a little more feedback from people, or what do you say, up two hundred and something, I got tackled by a pro-chicken person outside coming in. So, um, but I have had a lot of chicken naysayers, but, but again, I don't know how much substance there is to it. I do believe there'd be a ton of it if you have that neighbor that doesn't take care of it all, I mean, we've had people in town that can't even take care of their shed and their garage, to the point that we have to throw them, tear it down. And that's, you know, that, those are the, that's why we do this, I guess, but I just hate it because I feel like it's a slap in your neighbor's face and I don't know, you guys have done a really good job presenting, and I, and I could, I could easily support it, um, if we got the right ordinance, that's where I'm at.
Josh?
I'm kind of in the same boat as Craig, like, you guys got great information for us to look at, and again, it's just going to come down to enforcement, because we see someone that doesn't take care of it, that kind of ruins it for everybody else, and I think that's kind of why the ordinance is in place now. Uh, but then we also have the enforcement piece, like, how do we enforce if someone's not doing what they're supposed to be doing?
Right.
What, like, who does it?
And I, I would assume that we would, we would have, similar to like, what I brought up with some possible cannabis things with, with Bill and and talking to the sheriff, we'd have to get the, you know, get the sheriff's office on board, along with the county attorney's office, so that if we did get to that point where it's a violation, whether it's, I don't know what the, I see this one's a misdemeanor, that's in the example, I don't, I don't know what it would be, but that would be our, our route to, to do it, and I know you guys probably would hate to write a, a chicken ticket, I wouldn't like that either, it wouldn't be the high priority. But the reality is, if we are going to have something and we're trying to be fair to both sides, we do have to be able to enforce it in extreme situations, so.
My thought was possibly like, I would, you know, you would give them like, a visit, like, let's say your husband, we had a complaint, so the first thing is like, someone from our group will come and say, hey, let's, we've had a complaint, here's what you can do to improve it, you have like, you know, two weeks if you can get this straightened up, and then from there, whatever process, it would move to like, you know, then to the city council type thing, or whatever your process would be as far as legal steps. That was just my thought, was like, we would try to take care of it first.
Right, and, and that's basically how we work with all the stuff around here, and we'll, we'll send a letter and say, you're in violation of this, and we've got so much time to get in compliance, and if nothing happens, it continues, you have public hearing, and, you know, we'll get to the point where we'll issue a citation or ask for a citation to be issued. Uh, my, my fear is, if we do run into that problematic chicken person and we revoke their license, you know, what are, how are we going to be able to handle that, because then they refuse to get rid of their chickens, you know, at one point, I don't, I don't want to see Sean having to go in there and forcibly remove his chickens, but that's
That's not before.
That's not before, so, yeah. So I, you know, I don't, how do they do it with dogs, right now? Like, if there's a crock dog?
It's being dangerous, it's, they get the first time around, they gotta keep it in a certain caliber, they gotta keep it long, second time around, it's destroyed.
Sure, so what about like, noise?
There's a noise, there's noise ordinance on that too.
Yeah, my mind just told me to, to police it, like, we do.
Frank, the whole problem is, the rest of me ain't going to say nothing, well, it boils down to enforcement.
That's okay.
That's all it boils down to, we're in the middle of contract negotiation, again, trying to change some language in the contract, do things like that. When we do run into these problems, we have a real hard time getting enforcement, okay? You can't volunteer and walk into somebody's yard that doesn't work that way, I can't step on their property, you know what I'm saying? You've got some good points in your ordinance, but you got some bad ones, what do you got, a neighbor just doesn't like it, starts calling and complaining. We got problems when people don't like the sound of a wind chime in a neighbor's house two houses down. We've had to bring the police in on that deal. I mean, it gets to be quite a hassle for our law enforcement too, because we expect certain things, they don't really want to have to be doing this. I gotta tell you, it's, it's almost an impossibility to enforce, that's the problem. You can write whatever language you want, you're still going to have the ones that are going to do it just as easily.
But you being devil's advocate on that, and simply for the case of neutrality and being down the middle, having a no, no chicken ordinance is the same exact thing. Yes, we still have trouble, you know, you still have trouble enforcing it, but maybe it's a little bit easier, because it's just, it's clear, hey, we're going to take your chickens and stuff.
We have zoning ordinance, so you can't have chickens.
Well, no, I don't, but still, there's how many people in town, unfortunately, that violate it. It's hard, like you said, I
That comes down to county attorney problem.
Well, I don't, and that's what I'm saying, though, it's going to, it could be problematic either way as long as, yeah.
And then, like, what, the first graders do chickens and have chickens, do we do anything about that, do they follow the ordinance?
You know, if I had my way at school, wouldn't be giving chickens away every year.
I'm just saying, I mean, that's another, you know, that's another thing, and, but it's a great learning experience, right? I mean, it is, and I, I love that my kids learned about it and that they did that, but if we're going to talk about, oh, it's hard work to keep up the ordinance for some chickens.
I'm not saying it's hard work, I'm saying it's hostile to folks.
We can't, we, we, we can't, we have, we have a parking ordinance for, for snow, we have a hard time getting tickets written, and if they are written, they get dropped. We can't get a ticket written for someone filling up the, uh, park dumpster, I mean, it, it's just uh, there, it, it, I, I was telling you guys after last meeting, it's, it's, it's hard to tell you guys come to every meeting to know what's going on with, with, between the, between the ordinances getting enforced, the sheriff's department and the county attorney, you just can't, it just don't happen. I mean, if, if the ordinances were getting enforced currently, that we have, it's a lot easier, but we can't get our current ordinances enforced for filling a dumpster.
How do other cities do it, like, enforce? How do they, like, others, like?
See, you turn a blind eye.
Well, the reality is, even in, in, because I'm in the business of law enforcement, the reality is that, that city ordinance violations, I mean, you're, you're already scrambling out there, these guys are running hard, the ones that are still in a squad car. And you have to prioritize, so you can't always get there. I mean, now, granted, if we, if, if the city comes to get to the point where we ask, hey, we need, we're to this point, we need to get a citation issued, it should happen, even if nasty and male, you know, whatever. But, but I, I always have trouble with that, because I don't wanna, um, I know what it's like to be on that side of it.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's the same everywhere. I don't know how it works, Byron, I mean, you guys don't understand the Byron. Do you guys get stuck in force? I don't know that you were, I mean, I'm sure you worked at Byron, you know.
I mean, in Canada.
I don't think it's an issue over there.
You probably don't have a whole lot.
Well, your chickens, they go to school smoothly, yeah. Yeah, but I wish I would, if it, if it was that simple, you guys could go on their yard, I mean, it'd be simple, but I, what I have is they say, get off my yard.
Right, yeah.
You know, you know what I'm saying? I mean, it, I mean, it sounds great, but I don't know if it's, a lot of us is.
Maybe, I'll, I'll put it this way, maybe we have something to work with, but we're gonna have to do some hard searching, hard thinking here, how we're gonna be able to enforce some of this.
Mm-hmm. And I do think it's worth reaching out to some of these other cities and just, just getting a good feel for what
Did you guys know the sheriff, contact the sheriff, I mean, this, they ask about enforcing this stuff. I mean, our hands are tied. You know, there's just four of us, five of us, I mean, our hands are tied between the sheriff's department and, uh, county attorney. I mean, if it was this easy, it'd be easy. If I could, if you guys had a chicken committee and did one, check.
Yeah, we'd be letting you guys do it.
Yeah, I mean, that'd be awesome.
I feel like.
You guys went, you guys went, looked at it, set it up and made sure they were following the ordinance, it'd be amazing.
I think there can, you can be creative on that. I think, uh, we should be open-minded, if we go forward with something like this, to see it about. There's some community involvement and finding out, I, I totally agree, we'll never get to the point where they can force the rain on anybody's property, but, but if, by just trying for voluntary compliance, and they can see what they see in reporting back to us, I mean, all that gives us
Leverage?
More, yeah, it just gives you a little bit more that you can go after, if someone's being an ass and not on any, on your property, clearly they're, they're gonna be identified, and somebody ought to look at closer, right? So eventually you get there. I, I, I fully get it, though, I, beyond this side, it can be a major pain. And it, and it does, it is difficult, but in the same sense, I feel like it's hard to enforce a zero allowance or something as well.
That's a good point your son made, that your daughter read the speech, there's fewer and fewer farmers. Well, we have six chickens, there'll be fewer and fewer chicken farms out there. Well, that's it, she's got six, there's a dozen eggs there, there's plenty of, I can show you a gal right now, which is three miles out of this town, that probably goes, she's probably sitting on sixty dozen eggs, and no way they'll give her three bucks a dozen. You're right now. All home-raised, all organic, all what you're talking about.
I would love her number, because I would love to buy her. The eggs I get from Costco are organic and they're not good quality.
She's got eggs coming out her ears, she's got a couple hundred.
Yeah, it is, we're not doing it for the eggs.
Crazy, man, that's the whole point.
They're the best eggs in the world, hands here. Ask this young man what he did today, this is what he do, tell him, tell him what you do.
I just enjoy showing my chickens at the state, I mean, not
County Fair?
The county fair, it's just, I think that's really fun for me.
What'd you do, coach man?
Um, I got a grant reserve champion for my, uh, egg layers and one of my silkies.
So what if we had six hundred people from Sturfield that all showed chickens at the old Sturfield?
That'd be awesome.
That would get a little more difficult, right?
You got a champion on your garden.
I've gone around four, five times now, just, you know, kinda walking the streets around with my three-year-old and one-year-old in tow, so very trist, but, um. If going door to door, it seems like the vast majority, just percentage-wise, vast majority is like, I don't care if you were my neighbor and you had chickens, like, I don't care, like, a little plucking doesn't bother me, as long as it's not roosters, and as long as you take care of the coop, it's not a problem to me. Um, there's a few people that don't want it in town, and there's very few, e, the smallest percentage is people that actually do want it. I think the only people on my petition that have gotten to actually say, yes, I, um, I want to personally raise chickens, because that's an option on the petition I made, you know, do you personally want it, or do you just support, you know, the, the diet?
Just don't care, basically.
Right.
Just like anything in the city, eighty percent of people don't give a rat's, either way, ten percent are passionate about one end, ten percent are passionate about the other. And luckily for me, I get to run into those people when I'm on.
Yeah. I don't, I don't wanna diminish, um, the inconvenience that it would be, you know, to you guys to create something, or to, you know, if, if we were to start this and to think about how we would go about this, but I just wanted to mention that there's a very, very, very small amount of people that are actually even interested in doing it themselves, so.
So what you're trying to say is, we're not opening the floodgates here to chicken?
Right, right, that's what, I just wanted to just give a, what's that called, a temperature gauge of, you know, what, as, as far as the people in that area are feeling.
So Bill, what, what's our our course of action here? Do we, can we not make a decision on one, or, I mean, we can make a decision on moving forward, nobody's voting, I'm looking into it further, I, because I don't know yet, unless I can find the right ordinance, I mean, I'm not a hundred percent sure that I'd vote for it. I just would wanna see what the language could be and how realistic it could be.
Because we need to study some of this languages, local communities, if you're gonna do that. I have one more question for you folks, how do you, how do you, you're, you're exactly right, I'm not gonna argue the point, it is just a small handful of people that probably want, so. What, as a council, do we tell the next small handful that wants pot-bellied pigs in town? Because we've had them in town, we've had to get rid of them, and they like it, they love as much as you love your chickens. What do we tell the people that want goats in town? I want dwarf goats, because they're cute.
Really?
I'm being serious.
That's true.
Yeah, you go as far as to say snakes, rats, eagles.
That's right.
I said, I mean, you go on and on, I want an elephant. I mean, unfortunately, there is a line, you could say that about speed limits, I mean, you're a cop, we're gonna do fifty-five, well, I wanna do sixty, okay, let's go with the sixty.
Go, go sixty, and then get it.
But you know what I'm saying, you could keep raising it, you're never gonna keep everyone happy, um.
But where do you draw the line at?
Where do you get people that you please and the people you don't, right?
They're gonna come right back and say, there was only twenty-five people who wanted chickens, you let in chickens, there's only thirteen of us that want horses and dumb. You know, what do you say?
Yeah.
That's the great thing about living in free countries, that we're able to come and share
Right.
all of this stuff, and if someone comes with an elephant and say, I have an elephant, and this is all things, then you get to choose, you know, that's why you're in the committee, so that people can come and share that, and that's.
That's what I'm saying, where do you draw, where do new people draw?
I don't know, maybe it would be a good thing, I don't know.
I had a daughter want a monkey when she was growing up, and I was like, well, no.
Maybe she come up to the power.
I said, nobody wants a monkey.
Well, that, and you know, when my, I'll be honest with you, when my son came to me when he was in, whatever, eighth grade or third grade, and said, I want chickens, I was like, you're on drugs. He said, what do you mean? I said, well, chickens come rats, coons, meat, opossums, skunks. And he did exactly what we did here tonight. He agitated himself and was like, I'm calling BS. He says, you take care of it, right, and you get none of that. And he was right, I mean, at a certain point, I said, but they're not gonna give us our money back, so I'm not saying they're gonna. This is something that I'm passionate about, I wanna be a part of.
So what did you do all them years when there wasn't a chicken ordinance? It said, there was zoning ordinance, said you couldn't have chickens.
What did I do? What do you mean, what did I do?
What did your son do?
He had four chickens in the backyard. Um, I was told that as long as no one said anything, you're good to go. And my neighbors encouraged it, they're like, yeah, we'd love to have your chickens, that's cool. My son even trained them.
Well, that's fine, Frank, but what brought this up again was, there was a neighbor that said something. That's always a long.
Right, yeah, no, I get it, yeah, 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 someone said something, yeah. But, as far as I know, they didn't say something about the bird, they said, why do you get to have them? If you're not supposed to have them.
I'm not gonna tell you exactly what they said.
Right, no, I get.
It involves the birds, and it involves some other stuff, too. What I'm saying is, it's fine and dandy with your neighbors you have right now. There's never a problem with your neighbors not.
Right.
Never had a problem in my neighborhood until a different neighbor moved in, and now it's wind chimes.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I get it.
Wind chimes.
I get it.
Of all the damn things you can think of.
I get it.
We went and listened one night, Bill and I did, when they were down here complaining, you could barely hear them, we were sitting in their backyard.
I get it.
So what do you do when the next neighbor moves in and does not like chickens and starts complaining? We got this ordinance, we come up and say, get them out of here.
Yeah, I think.
And people are gonna say, well, you got an ordinance, says we can have them.
Yeah, I think.
Now we're back in court with our attorney spending your money again.
Right, I think if a neighbor comes in and complains after the previous neighbor okayed it, then show us what, what are, what's happening, what are you complaining about? It's the noise, okay?
That's all I gotta say, according to this ordinance right here.
Right, so it's the noise, I can tell you right now, four hens, you'll never even know they're, you'll hear a dove before you hear a hen, but.
You know, we'll go to the point, we've gone to extremes and force neighbors, they're gonna get a decimal meter, and then we gotta fight about that. I mean, you can't believe what goes on.
I get it, I get it.
Josh, you never did get to finish, what do you have to say?
Um, no, like, I, I can see you guys are passionate about it, and I think back, a few years ago, we had the tree ordinance, where there's, you couldn't plant trees in the, uh,
Boulevard.
in the boulevard, and a group of citizens came together and they changed it. So I think this, this could follow that same path, I think we just have to look into it more and and fine-tune what, what, what happened if, if a neighbor does, that's gonna be the biggest issue. I'll say something, I, I don't, I mean, Craig knows this, just because someone's complaining doesn't mean that the person that's complaining is right. Sometimes you just tell them, no. You're wrong, this person has a right. Your own liberties too, whether it bothers you or not, you're just wrong, we go to complaints all the time, we have to tell the person, your complaint's unfounded. We're not gonna just do something, just because you're the squeaky wheel and complain a lot, we're still gonna put our foot down, say, no, you can't infringe on this person's property, this is, they have rights too.
But Jason, if we fill out an ordinance, like what's presented here, it's right in there, if they complain about noise, that's the reason for.
We don't have to use that ordinance, if there's a noise complaint, that's a noise complaint, but the, the, they, they present a lot of evidence saying that chickens aren't a creator of noise, that's part of the point.
I got twenty chickens of my own, and they get pretty damn noisy, let me go get them.
You said twenty chickens, this is a forty-five.
It'll be, yes, and forty-five.
And, and I can tell you, there's lots of people in chickens, that have chickens in this town, and nobody knows they have them, because they're, they're silent and undetectable.
But when they get detected, then we gotta take action, and it runs out of this every time.
I know the reason was not because they were a nuisance, it was, it was for a different reason.
Could be, Jason, but we, we had a complaint.
Yep, I know the reason was, and it was nothing to do with the chickens being an issue.
And we were good about it for a long time, too, but we had to finally do something. We're not gonna vote on it tonight, we're gonna have to do, as Craig said, he wants more research done, Bill, did you do everything you wanted to add?
You know, obviously, you brought up the point about, yeah, where does it stop, when different neighborhoods are different groups, people want different things. And then I guess what's sad, because you've all brought up how great it is in America, you also expect in America that people abide by our rules. And when we have a current rule that says you're not supposed to have them at this point in time, then it's hard to see, and it's sad for our staff to see, that then we have citizens that violate that, the thing. And so then, is it just gonna get to that point with the other ordinance? Obviously, um, a lot of cities do it, and so with the council's directive to do some, um, additional research, you have the correspondence.
So do we need a motion to table it?
Yeah, but then we'd like your direction to get some feedback, probably it's best to use a lot of regional cities, right, in the southeast Minnesota.
So basically, yeah, I mean, I think we, I'll, I would make a motion to table it here, and I do think we need to reach out to at least cities around here, you know, that have this, I would like to hear what the pros and cons are. Well, why do they lean towards doing it? Why do they, you know, if they always did it, or if they, or a situation like us, and, and, and I'd be curious as to like, how many? Do they generally have? How many complaints do they get? You know, things like that, uh, it's, looks like there's plenty we can find as far as what you put into, um, the chicken coop requirements, but I would also like to know, is it enforceable? Are they having trouble enforcing? What, what's, because I certainly agree with the mayor, I don't wanna sit in court, I have our city sitting in court on everything, that's ridiculous, so. It's worth looking, how many, do you guys have an idea of how many communities allow it, have it on its four chickens?
Actually, I believe there's only one within fifty miles of us, one community that doesn't allow it.
Besides us?
Besides, true.
Who is it?
I wanna say, and I think Spring Valley's got one now, I, there was Spring Valley, but I think they removed it now.
They just got one.
They just got one, yeah. No, no, but, I mean, Chatfield, I mean, everyone's got.
Everyone around, so there'd be a lot, I mean, it's a lot of resources to, you know, we can find and tell them that's similar to our size. You know, what are, what are their issues, what are the positives, negatives?
What's Rochester do?
Oh, no, you don't want Rochester.
We sure as heck are comparing ourselves to Rochester.
Well, how you enforce Rochester's?
Yeah, but we, we just ignore it, it's like, screw that, and let the neighbor be miserable. I think you animal control on it, but ultimately, there's not a cop that's gonna find the time to go to a chicken event. I mean, that's just, it's why you have an animal control unit that goes out there during certain days, right, and at twenty-four seven. And, you know, I wouldn't know, because I think it goes through city clerk. So I've never seen a chicken.
Probably would be, yeah, if you had animal control, there's probably would be.
Yeah, no, it'd probably go through the city clerk, I would think, and then they would do whatever they do. Yeah.
What else, do we wanna make a motion on something?
Make a motion to table it and try to research it a little bit more.
Second?
I'll second that.
All the players say aye?
Aye.
opposed?
That'll be enough for one, we'll get an accumulation of, uh, different languages that we can send off to you to take a look at, and then we'll try as best we can to get the pros and cons
from the city's perspective of, uh, these various staffs that have.
Yeah, I know that's gonna be hit or miss, but I'd be curious, I'd just be curious, because I know.
We'll trigger this and stuff, or?
Yeah, so we can get a feel of, hey, these things are going very well, uh, these things, well, they're running into some of the troubles that could possibly.
Is there anything that we can do?
Will the, can you, will the county attorney give you any advice?
Yeah. We're gonna have the meeting, uh, pretty soon here, on, um, just some of our normal municipal ordinances, um, soon, so we can add to our list.
So what are due, I gotta ask one more question, what are due most municipal of your chicken waste?
Ours goes, or went into the garbage, or into the garden. We used to have a compost barrel, but then we just started throwing it away. I called, well.
LRS care, Tori?
Yeah, I, when Tori had it, I called Tori, and he's like, yeah. He said, oh, and you throw diapers in there, why couldn't you throw, we throw our dog poop, everything.
Put it in the garden for a long time.
Hmm.
I would love it for composting the garden, mixing more, it's like fertilizer, pre-fertilizer.
And that just seems too very mature for us, because you got a compost.
I will dispute your son on one thing, chicken manure does stink.
I can't, here's.
Chicken manure does stink, no matter what your son says.
In quantities. They feed it to cows. They feed chickens.
Oh, no, it's tasty. Do you have chickens now?
I don't, I would love to have them.
All right, that's taken care of, you're walking the state.
I'll listen for it.
We need, gotta vote for the second, but no vote.
We did vote, we said yes.
They all said yeah.
Oh, I did?
I mean, you got to dinner.
Yeah, they all did.
Okay, all eyes.
They heard. We can stay for the rest of this if you want, folks, if you want. We're gonna move on now to, uh, the back ordinance.
What ordinance? Thank you, guys.
Thank you for coming. Thank you very much for speaking, and, yeah. All right. Next item, tobacco license, Sturfield Tobacco and More, Doing Businesses Tobacco and More, owner Scott Gahemy, is that how you say it? Manheim has submitted an application for a tobacco license for approval. Tobacco and More will be open at three oh six South Main Street as soon as permits are approved by the city and state. Mr. Gahemy is unable to attend the meeting.
Is this the same, do you buy the license? Oh, you're kidding.
So council action here eventually will be to approve or deny a license for tobacco and more. My main question is, you seen how he lives in White Bear Avenue, St. Paul, who know he's gonna hire local staff or is moving down here, does anybody know? Well, that part's gonna work, is the owner of the building gonna be his staff?
Yeah, we'll have to check into that.
Right.
This has to go through, we approve this, it still has to go through the state or, state and county?
Yep, yep.
It has to start with us.
And then it's subject to their.
So, we're looking for a motion.
Which building is this? Is this the old Skipper Hills?
The old liquor store.
Be the old liquor store, yeah.
Old basketball.
Okay, that's the way.
I hope he knows that we don't necessarily have to approve cannabis licensing, because I think our population allows us to limit it to one. So he can be pissed over over, but it only has a business right to be approved at this juncture.
Do we own, it's, the more can be whatever, based clear or what? When we approve it, when we approve this licenses of now.
It's just for the current approved tobaccos that are allowed with some of our other businesses.
So does somebody, does this guy get background check, background checked by anybody? County or state, right? Because we don't know anything about it. Should be, I would hope the state would do it, right?
Yeah, cause if you see the attachment, that'll be the state.
Okay.
Application. And so make your motion subject to those approvals coming in. Um, the, the thinking is, as it might be with other tobacco licenses in town, with the new rules, there might be others that want to expand their inventory.
Well, that's what, we'll talk about.
Yeah, cause we'll get to that in a little bit.
Yeah.
But at, at the moment, it would only allow the current allowed tobacco.
Alright. We have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
To approve, depending, state, state maybe, so. We have a motion, do we have a second? You say second, gentlemen?
Yep.
We have a second, any other questions or discussion? Here you go, all the players say aye?
Aye.
Approves. That takes us into the head of staff and consulting boards. Mayor's report tonight. City of Sturridgeville would like to send in sympathies for the loss of family members of Dwayne Updugrave, Brianna Amos, Mary Beth Schmidt-Herman, David Nistip, Robert Steins, Nancy Dickerson, Marion Thompson, Jim Talon, Carol Ossenson, who was my fourth grade teacher, and Margaret Sack, who was a wonderful neighbor for many years. We're also wishing Senator Carla Nelson a full and speedy recovery. She had heart surgery on June twenty-ninth. She sounded like she's doing well last we heard. Uh, congratulations to Kristen Palomo for earning the Minnesota School Bus Operators Association's Transportation Specialist Award, which honors industry professionals dedicated to safe travel of their passengers. We're gonna have to try for that award, you're gonna have to work for that. Alright. Tomorrow night, concert series at Bear Cave will be LP in the forty-fives.
Maybe a little warmer.
And then the last concert at Bear Cave will be August second. And that's going to be, who's that gonna be?
Night shift.
Night shift, there, oh yeah, there it is. Don't forget to bring your lawn chairs, experience great music, food, lawn, trucks, boots, more. Don't forget Trash and Treasure Day is September fifteenth and sixteenth. Start, start your ball clean. I'd like to send a special birthday greeting out. I've always considered Marvin Victor part of our community, even though he lives out on Highway thirty out there by fifteen. He's a World War II vet, he was in town Saturday because he loves Pizza Ranch, he celebrated his hundred and fifth birthday. Hundred and fifth, he still drives a tobacco every day, mows his own lawn. Guys, you gotta see it. Makes me look like a giant. He was three, he weighed a hundred and thirteen pounds when he went into service, three pounds over the limit. He had to be a hundred and ten to get in. I don't think he weighs a hundred and thirteen pounds, though. But he's, he's just as quick as he always was. And then Gloria Naya, once again, won another award. She got into the Midwest All Music Association Hall of Fame. Another Hall of Fame for her. Mark, I'll give you this, you can write it down.
That's all I got, city affairs, city report. Okay, reports in the packet, uh, actually a number of items, just paying attention to. We started the negotiations with the county for law enforcement contract. I'll say at this time, proposed renewals. Um, Brian's been great to work with, and he's doing some additional research just on some follow-up questions. Mainly along, what you discussed earlier, on enforcement questions. Um, and then we are trying to figure out how the budget will work. They've thrown out a proposed budget, we've thrown out a proposed counter-budget to keep our budget more stable. So we'll see how that goes, but that will continue now and we'll keep you updated on that. Cause our goal for us is to, if we put that back in place, to have that ready for your, um, budget approvals, uh, coming up here during August first or December. Um, let's see, then the next item, uh, which will become a big item throughout Minnesota, it's on cannabis and marijuana management. Um, just to give you a quick update, the state of Minnesota is setting up a new department, state agency, that's called Cannabis and Marijuana Management. They're currently seeking a director, uh, for it. And this is supposed to monitor the sale of that product, or those products here in Minnesota. And, um, Cheryl and I have already been gathering quite a packet of information, most of the help coming from the league of cities, because all the other cities are asking the same thing. Okay, what's this gonna mean? How are we gonna enforce it? What kind of license do you need to set up? Um, the one rule that apparently gives us a little time is, the state is saying, no one's gonna be allowed to sell it until this office is up and running and they've established the rules for it, the projected date, the legal.
It's gonna be in twenty twenty-five.
January of twenty twenty-five.
So we don't gotta allow any of this?
So that's what I, my recommendation, what I brought up to them today, is I would say that we do it with, most other cities are doing, and we're, don't allow any of the sales, um, until the state can actually, because they, they made the legislature so fast, or the, you know, legislation so fast, that they don't even know how they're gonna enforce anything. So I would think that we say, we agree, you don't sell anything until that comes out. We, and then we would have to maybe readdress it if they start allowing cultivate, cultivation for prospective businesses. The two other things that I really wanna make, get the research on, I'm sure you already did it, is.
Public parks and public places.
Yep, I, limit the smoking as much as we can out in public.
Wouldn't that be the same as cigarette smoking?
Yeah, sure. So as long as we already have that, then that's good to go. As long as it's listed as smoking, right? And then, or vaping, or whatever. So we might have to just address it, clean it up. And I'm curious, um, I know the state was very clear, that you can't just deny people. For whatever, you just can't deny, uh, somebody wants a license. But if you, if you have a small enough population, you can limit it to one in your city. Or you could pick like, a specific city block where you can do a shop or something like that.
Yeah, if you like, um, the adult bookstore type ordinance, can't prohibit it completely, but you can limit. And whether that ends up being space area or by population. See, some cities have to abide by that with liquor, bars, um, I mean, um, off-sales. Yeah.
Yeah.
Of, uh, limiting it by population. And Craig is correct, right now that limit is, um, one, or what is it, twelve thousand?
Yeah, twelve, under twelve thousand.
That's the rule for this already?
That's one they.
Cause they're really trying to be, make it so that you, so it's troublesome for local governments to restrict. But luckily for smaller towns, you can get away with just allowing one, which I, cause I don't want us to be the destination, go-to place.
Yeah, so what it might end up being is, let's say we have three or four outlets that wanna sell it. Well, maybe it'll boil down to like the DNR does, um, moose hunting licenses. You gotta have a lottery here, I don't know. Uh, that might be something if we go with the one license per our population rule. So those are things we'll, uh, try to bring back, you know, to you. Or let us know what you want, we'll keep feeding you with, um, the information out there. If you go to the league website, you just, hold on, and you can always start studying it.
Rochester just passed an order, they just did one last night. Just saying, they just passed it saying, no sales. Nothing changes of what's currently allowed until the new, everything kicks in in twenty twenty-five.
So we'll come back with some recommendations on how, um, maybe it's as extreme as a moratorium, or it's just nothing like Craig said, issued until, um, the state has the rules in place.
Yep.
We'll try to come back with some recommendations, one or the other, on that part of it for you. But no, that's, like Craig said, all of a sudden the legislature, and the, and now cities, um, law enforcement agencies are, okay, now are we gonna enforce this and monitor it? Um, I did have a conversation with the sheriff. He said he'd be agreeable, or his staff would, uh, to work with us, um, and the state, um, on how we put together workable ordinances or language, so we'll keep working with him.
So, good, great.
Um, uh, you can read through the lengthy thing on the speed. Obviously, we've gotten a couple of comments on that, but to be honest with you, the comments against it are from rural residents.
I myself am not.
The comments for it have been from our own citizens, so we'll keep you posted on that. I've just told people that, hey, it's obviously can be revisited anytime you want. But I think it's only fair to go through a little bit of the school here to see how that is a work out.
I agree with that too. I, I actually, when I voted for it, I didn't care much, because I know I didn't drive much, but I probably wouldn't like the forty-five going all the way to ninety personally. However, it's, it's a new change, so maybe people will start getting used to it and start ramping down and, you know, coming into town. I think you mentioned in there too, that if we end up, uh, Mr. Chiak's tunnels get built, and if other stuff gets added on out there, you're probably not gonna walk the, any faster than.
That was the main reason we wanted to go to the whole road thing to develop.
And our comp plan talks about more residential growth out there. Obviously, as you're seeing, Bear Cave has taken off wonderfully in popularity and events and activities. And if some of you remember, that was what the city got hit with the most back when Bear Cave started taking off. Can't you do something to slow down that speed? We got kids crossing the highway there. Well, luckily, we got the no parking, uh, set up. And this is basically a follow-up to help, uh, uh, keep going with the safety factor. Now, that buffer zone, I'll admit, is longer than the other buffer zones around town, but every single main entrance into this town has a forty to forty-five, and then a thirty. So we didn't really do anything different out there. It's just, like you said, it's just a longer zone than like you see in the.
I don't think it's longer than Main Street, that's thirty miles all the way there.
Yeah.
I'd be more, have to complain about a four lane being thirty, than I would a two lane going through a school.
So I guess, and then, and then tell folks that we did get, and I know Jeremiah brought it up, um, I believe at one workshop or whatever, there were citizens that actually said, hey, we would like this, uh, controlled a little bit more. Obviously, the bus companies commented on it, and the school district has commented on it, that this was an okay thing for surely out to the school. And so as we monitor that second section or whatever, um, you'll have that. Um, and the last thing, Justin will probably talk a little bit more about it, but, um, uh, National Night Out, or Nineteen Nights coming up, and hopefully, if of course, all of you or some of you can maybe, uh, attend or ride along.
Thanks for mentioning that, till I forgot about that.
We'll coordinate that, and Justin will tell you a little bit more on that.
Bring the paddy weight and gun. Brent wants to go, we'll put him in the back. Any other questions for the minister? Alright, thank you, Bill. Finance, Carla.
Uh, still working on twenty twenty-four budget. If you guys have things to get to me, and just a reminder that our next council meeting is at the fire hall, because we do have the public hearing for the twenty twenty-four CIP.
Questions for Carla? Alright, thank you, Carla. Public Works Director Sean.
Has a report in there, the, we did start, we have the footings dug for the amphitheater bathrooms. We have run into a little hiccup, we're waiting for some changes to come back from our engineer. But we'll get that corrected, so we are hoping to pour tomorrow, it might not happen tomorrow, because I haven't heard back from them yet. So it is moving forward a little slower than we hoped. And then with Jenna being gone, covering the street project stuff that's going on, we had, uh, the CIP South project, they had pulled out for a week, uh, due to us closing, making them to keep one section open, so they pulled their underground crew out so that we always had access to them to work. Well, now, when we pulled them out, they were gone for an extra week, so they have gotten back this week. They plan to be done with all underground at the end of this week. Uh, hopefully getting people on temporary water next week, get all the water, be back running on the main system, uh, and then start the, the road immediately right after. So they're here until the end, now they're done. That's the sudden bulk change. The CIP North, uh, north of Sixth Green, uh, they also were pulled off for a week, had gotten laid because gas needs to move some stuff. Gas still hasn't gotten their move, they placed their gas tank in the wrong spot, and it's right where retaining wall needs to go again. So they had to move that gas line at their expense, it was flipped in the wrong spot. So they are back working again, but they cannot continue in that area with the retaining wall until the gas, they're supposed to be there this week. Wastewater plant, they had pulled out for a week also. They are back this week. So they are well ahead of schedule, so they're doing, looking good, and everything's fine there. Uh, the second ditch is going twice as fast as the first ditch. They use the first ditch for their experiment, getting it figured out, and the second ditch is moving really, quite rapidly, so it's going good out there. So, not a lot of great news there, but it's, it's moving this week, now things are starting back up.
Alright, thanks, Sean. Tell the guys to do a little bit. Any questions for Sean? No city engineer tonight? Nate, you're a library director report. See if you can make us happy, yeah?
I have no chicken-related content to share with council. Um, uh, so hopefully that helps. Um, we had a really big week, um, with construction week. Um, Sean and his crew were really, really great, so was the fire department in providing vehicles. Uh, kids had a great time.
You gotta see that. I tried to forget that guy.
I tried to get it, get it. No. That, he just showed up, like that was, um, I don't know how that happened, but, you know, we're powered to the fourth estate.
Yeah.
And, um.
Never got to see you on there, though.
No, he was really just, um, he just hung out with Sarah the whole time. Never talked to me, never like, looked my way, and I have a cool helmet on, too. So I don't know what it takes. But, um, yeah, we, uh, a lot of great stuff. Our programs have been really well attended, both in person and the to-go kits. We still have some pneumatic lifts left, if somebody would be interested in those. I think we've got about ten or twelve. And, um, yeah, Vikings and Libraryland are pretty good.
What are the kids this month? Are they the pneumatic?
Uh, so tomorrow, we're doing a, what's called a lung lift challenge. It's an in-person challenge where like, uh, people, uh, kids build a base, um, and with the power of their lungs can lift heavy objects with it, so kind of a structural building thing, where they can lift, um, a chair, a Lego structure, and ultimately like, this huge brick that like, um, we tested them out, they totally work. Um, and then, um, kid-wise, we have the smore ovens kit that goes live on Monday. Um, that's a really fun one, um, like a solar oven, where you can make smores on.
I love this one.
And then the, uh, yeah, I should, we should have set them up for this.
I'm sure you can skip the hell with this.
Uh, and then, uh, bow and arrow kit, the fun.
Oh, that'll be the one.
Yeah. So, and I'm frying it up.
We'll be handing out the guns and bullets when we get there.
I know, I'm still working on Nerf arrows. Like, that's like, we're, uh, testing those out, uh, this weekend next. Um, we're thrilled to have Mrs. Jones back with us for the remainder of the summer. She just finished an internship at, um, Saint Mary's, and so we get her for about a month. We're gonna be doing, um, uh, intern, or, uh, uh, inventory of the staff of the library collection the next month. Um, but Thursday night, um, if anyone, uh, we're doing a really nice adult crafting program, um, where people can make a wreath out of, um, older books, um, and that's it.
Sounds like you're busy, Nate.
I really am, yeah.
Any questions for the library director, anybody? Alright, thank you, Bill. Six floor, Hopefire Chief on cool record. I'll take this committee, commission, board reports, James Conners. You guys can throw it out. EDAHRA, uh, meeting in a couple weeks. Finance. Nothing?
We're meeting, well, we had one already, we're looking at that assessment policy.
There was, there should have been.
Yeah, I'm bench July thirteen, there's a meeting we had with Mike Mobani talking about looking at revised draft, revised assessment policies. Library?
We met with the architects again last week. Yeah, good. We looked at a bunch of different brainstormers of different arrangements for expansion and renovation.
Yeah, I'd say any council members who are interested in the progress in the project, I would be thrilled to talk to you individually or as a group, so let me know, and I got all the time in the world for you.
All right. We'll be ready to let you know, but ready to be thrilled. Park Board? First of all, fire zoning, public safety, Justin.
I don't have anything truly pressing to talk about. There's nothing absolutely crazy going on here. Already touched base on the tenth street. People are slowing down. It's a learning curve when everybody's hitting. The biggest complaint that I've heard is people coming over the ninety bridge, and they don't see the sign because they're not expecting a forty-five mile an hour sign, and then they're just, they're just lost. But it's mostly like Bill said, people outside of town. Inside of town, people are like, or they mess up because they've lived here for forty years, and it's a learning curve, people are.
But you're not writing out a package, tickets a day or nothing like that.
No, no, to my knowledge, I won't, I don't know of any citations that have ever written. I haven't looked into that, it's like.
I don't think there is. Thank you for visually, I saw you had somebody out there again the other night.
You can be out there all day long.
It's educational for now.
Yep.
You know, people get used to it. You'll look at the length of those zones.
If you guys would like, I can go through and figure out how many traffic stops, how many people are out there, if that's something you want.
We don't need that.
Then again, like those, Nineteen Nights coming up, hopefully everybody's got their smiles and waving hands ready. Through the floor, this will be my first one down here.
Get ready to get full.
That's, I'm ready for it. I'm a little wait.
Come on, don't hunker.
I'm willing to get rides. I know the other deputies that are gonna be down here will also help out. None of us bike that I know of, so.
Hey, we don't wanna travel long.
Absolutely, Jim.
We'll get something set up with you here just before that.
Okay.
They'll get it figured out, these are escape.
People are telling the fire department where it is, so that doesn't get lost and everything, so the fire department knows where every department is right now, so we don't forget.
Yeah, we'll get them to know and fight you.
Really quick, Justin's been doing a great job getting to know and make his way around the departments and around the community, and he's been doing regular check-ins with us and our staff here, so we appreciate that so far.
Same, same. We're getting a little watch from that office over there. Perfect, Justin, thank you. Public Works? Nothing right now, ready?
No report.
Roll call?
No report, being.
Transit Advisory Committee.
No report.
You had a big one last night, I'll get you.
Yep.
Communications, nothing? Anybody wanna use your old mic? Al, Justin? You don't wanna thank us, tell us how great we are or anything like that?
Hope we'll find out.
You can motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn, do we have a second?
Second.
All the favors say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, lack of care.